Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, May 20th. I want to welcome you to your council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. So could we call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonner, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Coian, Labash, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, Biden seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell move, Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now will be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, we'll be led today by Mr. Gilbert Sadio.
(Inaudible) to the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Okay, if there are individuals that are trying to hear this council meeting via council phone, we're having some technical difficulties with that at this time, and they're trying to work out the problem. So we'll be back online where it relates to the phone. Why don't we go through the agenda, Madam Clerk, at this time?
Items one through three are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items one A and C may be received and filed, and as much as the liens have been paid and will be paid.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on all three items.
Okay, so let's hold those. Let us move to the next section of items.
Items four through nine are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, special, Mr. Weezer.
Four special, please.
Four special for Mr. Weezer. I don't see any more specials. Why don't we prepare to vote on the remaining items? Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, for item five? Oh, there's actually twelve votes instead of eleven.
Okay, Mr. Carrick?
No, I just wanted to be counted.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, I missed your announcement. You said there's actually twelve.
Yes, so the ordinance is adopted.
Okay, so let's move on.
Mr. President, on number six, is anyone here for number six, any department? Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
And, Mr. President, there's requests to send item five forthwith.
Mr. O'Farrell, okay, without objection, item five, forthwith. Is that what you wanted, Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes.
Okay, so then let's move on. That brings us where?
Items 10 through 17 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
So that leaves us with?
Item 16 and 17.
Okay, I don't see any members on the queue where it relates to those items. Let's prepare to vote on those. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Item 18 is an item for closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes. Mr. Labash.
Fourthwith on number nine.
Fourthwith on nine?
Number nine.
Number nine, fourthwith per Mr. Labash. Okay, so that brings us again to item 18. I decided to hold that on the desk until I have a conversation with our Budget Chair. Now that brings us where?
On the supplemental agenda, item 19 is an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
So, without objection, that item is now before, so we'll hold that item. So that brings us back to?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Englander, Mr. Englander, for an intro. Mr. Englander, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is Bittersweet, where we've got one of our very own who is leaving us, but on to greener pastures. Before joining the city workforce, the second-generation Angelino graduated from the University of California, Berkeley. Having realized the error of his ways, he returned to Southern California and entered the city service, working in the CLA's office. While at the CLA, John worked on a variety of public safety and budgetary issues on behalf of the city council and all of Angelinos. His efforts in organizing presentations to the Public Safety Committee by the Fire, Police Department, Emergency Management Departments, as well as his writing of the most clear, concise, organized, and timely committee notes and reports contributed to making the city of Los Angeles the safest big city in the nation. The many motions he prepared on behalf of the city council were instrumental in shaping city policy and, in the case of reward motions, pursuing justice. He demonstrated his commitment to emergency preparedness in working with the 12th Council District in laying the groundwork for the 2008 International Earthquake Conference, by the way, the largest international earthquake conference ever held, where he enjoyed many bags of earthquake swag. He devoted countless hours to the Commission on Revenue Efficiency Corps and is thus a hero of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates. They have one hero, not unlike his many, his personal hero, Wolverine, to whom he bears an uncanny resemblance. He is a man of rich and varied interests, having made an annual pilgrimage to the Coachella Valley Music and Arts Festival for the past six years. His discretion was such that most everyone knew that he was dating one Miss Monica McDermott, a city staffer in the Mayor's Homeland Security and Public Safety Grants Section, and now his lovely wife. After eight years with the city of Los Angeles, John traded bear for Bruin and earned his MBA from the UCLA Anderson School and is now headed to a new adventure in the private sector, having accepted a position with the corporate office of AECOM. Jonathan Derring, I'd like to just say that I've had the honor and privilege, both as a staff member and now as a council member, to work with some very special people in the city. And you've really brought the bar up pretty high. Somebody that we've always counted on as part of our own staff and always had the best interests, not just of us in mind, but the people of Los Angeles. And your heart has always been in the right place. You have an unparalleled work experience and work ethic that will take you far, and it already has. And I'm just honored to say that, on behalf of me, on behalf of Doug Tripp as well, and the entire CLA's office and the whole city family, God bless you and for everything you've done, and only good luck in health and happiness for the rest of your years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So this is signed by all of us, and which is fitting. And hopefully it'll hang in your new office and as a token of our appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You want to say a couple words, please?
Just real quickly, this is very unexpected. I just want to say thank you to you, Councilman Englander. And it's been a great experience. I'm very grateful to have been in the CLA and to have the opportunity to support the council in its efforts. And I very unexpectedly saw my dad in the audience, so I want to give a special thanks to whoever is responsible for that. This is very touching to me, so I'll thank you again.
Now, thank you for all, thank you for all your service. Mr. Englander?
Yes.
I'd like to call on Mr. Weezer.
Very simply put, go Bears.
And again, thank you, and we wish you well. Mr. O'Farrell, as Mr. Englander leaves, would you like to make your way to the center aisle?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to help bring awareness and promote the importance of early detection and treatment of Lyme disease. Standing with me this morning, I have Chief of Staff to the Department of Disability, Mr. Tony Abraham, and Daisy Bonilla, also of the Department of Disability, and Sandy Bowley, Campaign Chairperson for the Los Angeles Lyme Walk and Rally. Lyme disease is a bacterial infection transmitted by the bite of exode ticks. They inject a toxin that is believed to cause Lyme disease. These ticks are carried by deer, rodents, and birds, and often found in wooded areas and grassy fields. Ticks are tiny and their bite is painless. Thus, many people who catch Lyme disease don't even realize they've been bitten, much less infected. The first case in the United States was in Wisconsin in 1969, years before it gained official recognition as a tick-borne illness in the town of Lyme, Connecticut. The history of Lyme disease in Connecticut began in '75, when a cluster of children and adults residing in the community all started experiencing strange arthritic symptoms. In 2013, Lyme-infected ticks were found in seven Los Angeles-area parks. It's not, if it is not treated early, infection may disseminate and affect the skin, joints, organs, nervous system, and the heart. Through public awareness and physical, I'm sorry, physician education, the city of Los Angeles seeks to minimize the devastating effects of Lyme disease among all its residents by informing them of multiple protective and preventative actions that can be taken to reduce exposure and infection. This past weekend, on Sunday, the City of Los Angeles Department on Disability joined the cause in taking part in this year's Los Angeles Lyme Walk and Rally. I would like to bring, I'd like to recognize Sandy Bowley, as I mentioned, the Campaign Chairperson for the L.A. Lyme Walk and Rally, who was diagnosed some years ago as a fighter against Lyme disease, and she is going to say a few words. Sandy?
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. Lyme is here, in Los Angeles, in the state, across the country. It is the fastest-growing vector-borne disease in the world. It has surpassed the number of cases recorded, let me rephrase that, it has surpassed the number of reported cases of AIDS by hundreds of thousands. And people with my disease are not being helped. We are being pushed away by the medical community. We are being told that it's all in our head. We are being told that we have many other diseases like ALS, MS, lupus, and some doctors just see it as a psychological condition. We are not getting the help we need, and we have had to take it among ourselves in the community to try to push forward, to get what we need to survive. My case in point, I was bit in 2006, and I started getting sick in 2008, and I was not diagnosed until 2011. 2000, when I was diagnosed in 2011, I had already reached the late stage of Lyme disease, which is known as late-stage chronic Lyme disease, where it had affected my central nervous system. There is no getting rid of it. There is no cure. All that we can hope for is to push it into remission and learn to live with it. But people are dying. I have lost in the past year ten close friends in the community due to the effects of Lyme disease, and it needs to stop. The government and the city and the state all need to pay attention, because this is a global epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Now, therefore, colleagues, I ask that you join me, the states of New York, California, Delaware, Iowa, North Carolina, and other states across the nation, to declare May 2014 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles, and encourage the education and public awareness of this devastating disease and the impacts that it brings. And just as a token of our appreciation to Sandy for bringing awareness to this, I would like to, on behalf of all of us, provide you with a certificate of recognition for bringing the awareness to us. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what I'd like to do now is quickly go to item 10. We have cards on item 10. That is Mr. John Walsh and Donna Peirman on item 10. Please come forward. Doesn't matter who comes first. Just come to the center aisle. Yes, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Fantastic blog up there today. And this concerns, again, the appointment, an appointment of Mr. Chris Leibn to the Board of Transportation Commissioners. As you know, the mayor has said he will vote Thursday for the fare increase. Racist piece of crap that he is. But I would like to point out that the composition, gender composition now, it's even for a gay man like the mayor and his hatred of women.
Stay on the item.
Males, six, females, one. Males, six, females, one. And Chris Leibn is now being placed on there. He's already signed a letter of resignation, undated, in the mayor's hands. If he does anything wrong, he crosses the mayor. The mayor is a politically correct gay fascist. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman.
Yeah, I'm going to take a short period of time. I just want to tell him that we really need to do something, since you're on the Transportation Board, we really need to do something about the 720 that goes to Santa Monica. We really don't need the short line. Look into that, see how crowded the 720 going to Santa Monica gets. If we get enough going down Santa Monica, going all the way down Wilshire, then eventually we'll go back, and we'll have plenty of buses. We don't need to do this silly short-line business. And please, I know that, I don't know if you, since you're on transportation, please keep the 761 on Van Nuys Boulevard. That's where we need to keep it, on Van Nuys Boulevard, because most people know going to Westwood or on Van Nuys Boulevard, you're going to strand a lot of people who won't understand that that 761 won't be there. They'll be going down Sepulveda. This is ridiculous, and we don't need a rail project going down Van Nuys Boulevard. We need to keep just that same bus, 761. And I hope I, there'll be a lot of other buses. Don't have them run just once an hour. That's ridiculous, like the 158, the 169. This is, this is an area where if you really want people to take transportation, you should make it a little more accessible, and don't raise the prices, because people won't be able to afford them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. There we go. I just wanted to rise very quickly. I don't think there's any need to bring Mr. Leibn to the table. If you could just stand for a second. Mr. Leibn is a resident of the 11th District. He has worked for Metro for 11 years. He brings expertise and professionalism to this post, and I'm looking forward to his active and engaged service. Did want to respond to just one of the bits of nonsense we just heard, that over 50% of the mayor's commission appointments are women. And I think that's important to note, since it was just an accusation of a gender imbalance. So thank you very much for your service. We look forward to having you. I recommend an iVote.
Thank you. With that said, Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Well, that passes. Let's now go to Mr. Weezer. Are you prepared to take up item four, which is another appointment?
Yes, Mr. President. This item concerns a Commissioner to the Pueblo Commission here in downtown L.A. I'd like to ask Mr. Buscano to make his presentation, please.
Mr. Buscano?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for allowing me to bring up a fine resident of the 15th District, Mr. Salvatore Di Costanzo, if I can have him come to the table and share with us. We heard loud and clear in committee in our Arts and Parks Aging River Committee on what a fine candidate that the mayor's presenting us. I've had an opportunity to know Sonny Sal for many, many years, as not only a loving husband and father, but a true advocate in the Harbor Area community, an advocate for promoting not only social justice, but preserving our Italian culture in the Harbor Area. He's joined by his loving wife, Beth, his kids, Dante and Mia, and his mother, who is just a proud day for his family and for the entire city. He's a native San Pedro, a son of Italian immigrants, and it's important to have the eyes and ears in the Pueblo Commission, which dates back to a true history of when Italians landed here in Italy, and we, preserving that Italian history through the Italian Hall and the Italian Museum, which will open later on this year. Sal, tell us a little about yourself and my colleagues, why you want to do this, and how you're going to bring forward your skills, your knowledge, your abilities to lead this commission?
Thank you, Councilman Buscano, very much for that introduction, the rest of the council as well. I'd like to thank the mayor's office, Councilman O'Farrell, and the Arts and Parks Committee for giving me this opportunity. It's truly an honor to even be asked to serve the city of Los Angeles and its people in this capacity. El Pueblo, as you all know, is the birthplace of the city, and as it has historically to today, it represents the various peoples and cultures of the city like maybe no other place in the city. I was born and raised in San Pedro to immigrant parents. As Joe indicated, my mother Frances is here in the audience. We were raised in a very traditional household. I was a public school, L.A. USD product, attended Catholic High School, went to USC locally, and got my teaching credential from Dominguez Hills, Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Dominguez Hills. I've tried to get back to my community as much as I am able, both my community of San Pedro, larger city of Los Angeles, the Italian community, by answering the call whenever it came. And I look forward to doing the same and working with the council and the El Pueblo Department on revitalize, continuing to revitalize the area. Italian Hall in particular is a very special project to me, but the other museums and projects and parks in the area, I think, are a gem for the city to utilize in terms of tourism and commerce, and I'm excited to be involved.
Well, thank you. Before, I need to go to Mr. O'Farrell for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Costanzo, I want to thank you for all of your years of volunteerism at the local level, and I just want to say something about volunteers here in the city of Los Angeles. You are what makes the city tick, and that you've been appointed to El Pueblo, I think just shows and demonstrates your commitment to the city in a broader level, and I really want to thank you and to your family. You have, in Salvatore, a wonderful son, husband, and father, a very outstanding individual, and I also commend your appointment, and I think that you're going to do great things on this commission. So thank you for stepping up to the plate and volunteering in a greater capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Buscano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, you heard loud and clear how Sal, Sonny Sal, will bring forward his skills, knowledge, ability on the Pueblo Commission. I asked for an iVote to recommend this commission appointment by Mayor Garcetti and move forward and get him sworn in so he can get to work. Thank you.
Okay, with that said... With that said, Mr. Buscaino, why don't we give, family, why don't you raise your hands? Can we get a shot of the family? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for coming down. Not me, the family, yeah, okay. So that your daughter can see herself on television. Anyway, with that said, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
You're confirmed. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'm going to go to Item 3. So if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak where it relates to the budget, you should do it. Submit a card right now. Once we complete this stack, then that, there'll be no more cards taken. So with that said, Mr. Kocorian, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, today we're going to be hearing public comment on the Budget Committee's report to the council. Tomorrow, we'll have an opportunity to vote on it, and we'll consider introducing motions and so forth. But today, the only job before us is to receive the report and hear public comment relating to it. And I want to talk just a little bit about process and then highlight a couple of things that are in the budget. First of all, the Budget and Finance Committee heard over 40 hours of testimony and public comment on the mayor's proposed budget. And the work product that's before you today is the result of that over 40 hours of committee work. And I want to thank my colleagues on the committee, Mr. Blumenfeld, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Englander, and Mr. Corretts, for putting in all of those hours and for really participating and digging in deep into the mayor's proposals. I want to give you just a couple of highlights about the budget before we begin taking public comment. First of all, this is a budget that, again, meets our financial policies of exceeding 5% Reserve Fund to the General Fund. So this is another budget, that is another step in the right direction towards long-term sustainable fiscal health for this city. The Reserve Fund is over $284 million, over 5.5% of the General Fund. In addition, we've added to the Budget Stabilization Fund, we've added another $2 million to further protect the city from economic fluctuations. Even with that money being set aside, this budget provides for over 2,400 lane miles of pavement preservation and enough funding to fill 350,000 potholes. It includes two new classes of firefighters and an additional $3 million that the Budget and Finance Committee put into the UB for a third class of firefighters. It'll be the first time that we've been able to hire up firefighters like that in a very long time. In addition, the budget provides for $3.5 million for ambulance enhancement, and it provides for current level of sworn staffing at LAPD with an additional $30 million set aside to bring down the police overtime bank. The budget provides for 60 new black and whites for the police department to replace vehicles that are at their end of life. Importantly, to many of our constituents, this budget provides for $20 million to invest in sidewalk repairs throughout the city to begin addressing that long festering problem of deferred maintenance. This budget provides for over $3 million in funding for senior meals that were at risk of being cut because of federal cutbacks and cost increases in our Department of Aging. This budget provides for senior meals to remain at current levels of funding. We provide for over $2 million for median maintenance and $1 million for graffiti abatement to help fight blight in our neighborhoods. And we provided funding for eight additional prosecutors in the city attorney's office to fully bring up to speed the neighborhood prosecutor program, as well as provide some prosecutors for marijuana enforcement as well. So, in many ways, this budget has met the objectives that many of us have expressed and the priorities that many have expressed, but I do want to also emphasize that while this is another step in the right direction, it is not the end of our journey. Even with the conservative budget that we have today, we still are facing structural deficits for at least a couple more years to come. So I just want to emphasize, colleagues, that this is a continued step in a long journey, but we have to stay faithful to that journey until we fully erase the structural deficit, until we fully address these long-term problems like the police overtime bank and some of the other issues we have to address. This is not the time to start celebrating our economic recovery and begin adding a lot of new programs. When we erase our structural deficit, we will have a strong foundation to be able to begin rebuilding our city services and having the city government that we want to have. But we are not yet there. We still have a couple of more difficult years ahead of us, and I just want to emphasize that. So that being said, after we hear the public's comment today, if members want to introduce any motions relating to this budget report, either today or when we hear it tomorrow, I'm going to ask the council president to refer any motion that has a budgetary impact on 2014, 2015, or any motion that has an impact on our projected deficit for the following year, will be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee for further consideration in committee before we bring it back to council. And, Mr. President, I think with that, let me just take another moment. I did thank the members of the committee, but obviously, this is a process that involves many, many people, and starting with the mayor for working so collaboratively with us on this budget. This has been a very positive process, I think, and so I want to thank the mayor and his whole budget team. I want to thank, of course, the council president for being so supportive of all the work that we're doing in committee and his staff as well. And then the CAO, Miguel Santana and his staff, including Ben Seja, Jacob Wexler, Terry Sauer, Delilah Pooch, and the entire rest of the CAO team. The CLA's office, of course, led by Jerry Miller, and Budget stalwarts Sharon So, Karen Calfean, and Roy Morales. The city clerk's office, Erica Post and Patrice Latimore, who helped us so much in getting through this very difficult committee process, and then all the others that help us, our sergeants, our audio and video team with ITA. Everyone has pitched in to make this a collaborative effort, and I especially want to thank my own budget advisor and policy director, Matt Hale, and my chief of staff, Renea Brinosian. And with that, we're ready to hear from the public, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms... No applause. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian, for a job well done. Okay, members, before I call on the public, in the event that you do have motions that you'd like to introduce, let's try to get those introduced today. The, I think there's an apparatus in the back to help you do whatever it is you want to do. If you could get those in today, it'll make tomorrow more efficient. I also want to announce to the members that tomorrow will be Mike Bonin Dress Day, so come relax. We don't know how long. Hopefully, we'll do this in a timely fashion, but dress comfortably. So, with that said, we want to start off with Sarah Mitchell, Corinne Rogan, Anna Mark Edwards, please come forward. No applause. No applause, it's disruptive.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
I'm Sarah Mitchell. I'm with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. We represent more than 390 businesses in the city and surrounding areas. Like as a founding member of the Axe the Tax Coalition, along with the Central City Association and Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, we strongly urge the city council to send a more significant message to the business community by reducing the business tax over a faster timeline than in this budget. And our meetings with each of you, we have seen a true commitment to enhancing the business friendliness of our over-regulating, over-taxing, and underperforming city. We know you cannot fix it all in a day, but real action on this issue will show a commitment to establishing a positive relationship with the business community. While the mayor's proposal amounting to a 30-year phase-out is a step in the right direction, is insufficient to averse 35 years of job loss. We fully endorse the Business Tax Advisory Council's recommended plan. B-Tech persevered in crafting a viable plan that consolidates rate categories and uses a 15-year measured approach with regular stoplights. The business community is open to a longer timeline than 15 years, but 30 years is too long and fails to provide the path toward stability. We look forward to your recommendation for an approach that protects the city while providing a light at the end of the tunnel. The gross receipts tax is a mechanism for a different time and a different Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could, next, just state your name. Mark can move forward.
Mr. President, members of the city council, I'm Mark R. Edwards. I'm here on behalf of Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, along with Corinne Rogan. And as Councilmember Kocorian said, there's been many, many, many hours of testimony, a lot of input, so I will just keep this short and sweet and just reiterate our position that, you know, we're here on behalf of 900 businesses, and we're two of them, and we strongly support the inclusion of meaningful business tax reform in this year's city budget. Specifically, we ask the council to adopt language that would augment the mayor's proposal to reduce the gross receipts tax over the next four years, by increasing the overall spending commitment to reach at least $75 million in reduction over the next five years, proving to the business community that the city is serious about resolving the issues around business tax reform. We thank you for all your hard work that you've done on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to reduce the business tax. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
Okay, please, so, Corinne?
Yeah.
Were you going to speak? Holly Benson and Ezra Gale.
I'm Corinne Rogan, and I agree with what Mark has said. It is time that we go ahead with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Holly Benson, and I am the board president for the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing, as well as the vice president of Housing Development for Abode Communities. I'm here this morning to first thank you all for your hard work. It's an unenviable task before you, but I'm specifically here to ask the city council to consider using former tax increment funds to help fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, an existing program that has been woefully underfunded. I also want to thank council members O'Farrell and Sadio, who recently introduced a motion to use TIF as a source for the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund as part of the fiscal year 14-15 budget. Their leadership on this matter has been greatly appreciated, so thank you. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we are hoping will ultimately be fully funded back up to the $100 million it was originally envisioned to be at, is critically needed. The city of Los Angeles has a shortfall of over 375,000 homes affordable, needed for extremely low-income households. Between 2000 and 2012, rents in the city went up 20%, while incomes went down 8%. 79% of the market rate need for homes was developed between '06 and 2012, but only 17% of the need for low income was met. Just think about that. 83% was unmet for low income during that time period. Meanwhile, California sources across the state for affordable housing are just dropping dramatically, down 79% since 2008. But we have some examples to follow. There are some other jurisdictions throughout the state that are making this act of committing former tax increment funds towards affordable housing: Oakland, LA County, San Francisco. So we have an opportunity here, as part of this budget process, to do the same thing in the city of Los Angeles. I encourage you to do so, and I thank you for your time.
Please come forward. And you are?
My name is Ezra. I'm with the...
So hold on, Ezra, if I can get Mr. Walsh after Ezra, and I think it's Samantha Beasley. Ezra, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good morning, council members. I'm with the Central City Association of Los Angeles. CCA strongly supports the efforts of the Business Tax Advisory Committee. However, we also believe that the mayor's proposed budget reforms for the gross receipts tax represents a strong first step in the right direction. CCA certainly hopes that the council will consider larger reforms to the gross receipts tax in the future, given the fact that the tax is a significant issue for many businesses in the city and serves as a deterrent to businesses looking to locate and also to grow in Los Angeles. Additionally, it's highly symbolic and reinforces Los Angeles's negative stereotype as being business unfriendly, despite the fact that the stereotype could be undeserved. The mayor's proposal will support job creation and provide encouragement to the business community in Los Angeles, and for these reasons, CCA supports the proposed reforms. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting now Opposition, 100% against this budget. I'm not coming here tomorrow, because I've been informed that it is Mike Bonin Dress Day. I have tried wearing a dress. I look terrible in it, but if you want to come tomorrow, remember, you must wear a dress.
Stay on the budget.
Okay, let's talk about ultimately what's happening here, and I want to talk to the entire world about this. Stay away from this city where they bomb black people at public housing in East LA. I'm telling you, the number one issue that you should have on your, you should spend an extra million dollars to find out the names of the Hispanic gangs who bombed out black people, and even the LA Times put it on their front page, and they're leaving East LA. Remember, if you are African, if you are black, you are not welcome in this city by the Latino gangs, and they will bomb you and murder you, and not a single person up here, in particular, the phony blacks, will say anything. It rubs off, doesn't it, Mr. Price?
Stay on the item.
And you are a white man. And I want to tell you that this is the highest-paid city council in the United States, and every black person is bought off...
Stay on the budget.
And they go on their knees in front of their Hispanic masters.
Stay on the budget, Mr. Walsh.
Well, what is it? Okay, when I finish, let one of you answer what I say, and you can't answer it because it's true. This city is out of control, it has a structural deficit. That means that it's perpetually in debt, and you have no, nothing you're going to do except lower the business tax. NFL, stay the hell away from this city. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
Ms. Beasley, followed by Donna Pierman, followed by Lloyd Greif. Please be quiet, you're disrupting. Okay, Ms. Beasley, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Samantha Beasley, and I'm here representing the LA Area Chamber of Commerce, our 1,600 members and the nearly 650,000 people they employ in the Los Angeles area, President Wesson, and members of the city council. The chamber has been part of a coalition of community organizations calling for a phase-out of the city's gross receipts tax. We appreciate the first step recommended by Mayor Garcetti in his budget proposal, and we encourage the city council to bolster the mayor's recommendation by accelerating the phase-out as recommended by the Business Tax Advisory Committee, and by extending the initial phase-out from three years to five. This recommendation would make a very strong statement to the job creators of Los Angeles. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Lloyd, followed by Ms. Pierman, and Will, Will Wright.
Good morning. I'm Lloyd Greif, chairman of the Business Tax Advisory Committee. Residents of LA are hurting, and we need to answer their plea for help by not taxing businesses out of the city. LA's unemployment and underemployment rate is 23% higher than California and 47% higher than the nation. LA has lost 80,000 jobs, while the rest of LA County has gained seven times that amount, 545,000 jobs since 1980. LA leads the region with the highest unemployment rate, the highest job losses, and a business tax is nearly 10x the average for the other 87 cities. LA's Byzantine business tax is a throwback to a bygone era in 1936, when manufacturing ruled the roost in LA. Now LA is a service-driven economy, with these businesses making up 55% of the economy, taxed at the highest tax brackets that are most mobile, they're high in clean tech, healthcare services, professional, scientific, and technical occupations, architects, engineers, entertainment services firms, small to medium-sized businesses that make up LA's economy. For these companies, business location is a choice, not a requirement. The prohibitively high business tax is a disincentive... The prohibitively high business tax is a disincentive to come to, expand in, and remain in Los Angeles. We support the mayor's proposal to reduce the business tax to 4.25, but it doesn't go far enough nor fast enough. 4.25 is a mere 16% reduction in Class 9 only. It still leaves LA as the highest overall tax city. We need to get all three services company rates down to 2.55 within five to six years, with safety stoplights every two to three years to ensure the plan is working, and other revenues from increased economic activity replace the investment in business tax reduction. The stoplight mechanism safeguards the city revenues and allows businesses to prove that if you create a more hospitable environment for doing business, business will come and employ your residents. The stoplight is a carrot to make businesses man up and put their money where their mouth is. If you don't increase revenues to the city from sales tax, property tax, utility tax, permits, license, and fees, don't trigger the next phase of business tax reduction. At 2.55, LA will be far more competitive with the region than competing major metros nationwide. Investment in business tax reduction is investment in job creation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lloyd. Donna, Peirman, Will Wright, and Frank Lima.
Okay, I'm sorry that our mayor didn't do anything about allowing our Vannys videoconferencing. This is a very small amount, counting all these millions that you're talking about, to be able to allow the people to speak, the disabled, elderly, and the people with illnesses, and a lot of people who just don't want to take the long period of time to come out here. They should be able to speak, and we need to make another small amount to be able to advertise, because I think there's a lot of people up there that would speak if they knew about it. But this idea about getting rid of the business taxes is, sometimes we have these very large businesses, and those people are also getting, have a tax reduction, business tax reduction, and this is not right. The fact of the matter is that 100% of our, the business taxes goes to the city. So this is ridiculous to be able to get rid of all the business taxes. Everyone else has to pay taxes. Property owners have to pay taxes. People, when they buy things, have to buy taxes. There's a lot of taxes everywhere that you just can't simply say for businesses not to pay taxes or take a huge download on, especially for the large ones. And I don't like this LAPD doing overbanking, the overbank on overtime, where they, this is a large amount of overtime, and this is something that has got to stop right now, and I see that's on there, and that's got to stop right now, because most of the money is going toward LAPD. And I see that the rest of the city employees are already doing their fair share. We don't need to take any more from any other city employees, and we need to take, I think with the City Council, and is making way too much money, and our mayor too. So cut yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright, Mr. Lima, Dr. Perry Crouch.
Good morning. Will Wright with the American Institute of Architects, representing 3,200 design professionals here in Los Angeles. I would ask you to take a deep breath, look 15 years into the future, and imagine the economy that you'd like to see for this city, the prosperity you'd like to have, the fiscal health you'd like to see, and make that connection to a business tax deduction as recommended by the professionals that you hired to bring together to study this issue. We endorse, as the American Institute of Architects, the Business Tax Advisory Commission's commitment to make this city a better place. The mayor took a first step, and we encourage you all, as the city leadership that we have, to take that next step forward and endorse the 15-year phase-out. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank? In fact, Perry, come on, you're right there. You come, and then we'll do, go to Frank. Dr. Crouch.
Hey. First, give an honor to God and all my family. Mr. President, we want to thank you for that beautiful budget that you, through committee, Mr. Kokorian, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Bloomfield, and Mr. Englander, yes, did a fantastic job. What we hear, I'm here today, sir, to ask that we went from 21.7 to 20.5 in the grid. We got a decrease. We can't stand the decrease. You know, we had the march on April 26 in the Westmont area. A lot of the homicides, that's that area that all of the problems. So today, too, we're doing a follow-up. We had 251 murders, which is still too many for our last year, but this year, starting Saturday, we have the pre-summer conference, the peace conference. Our councilman, Mr. Buscaino, is going to attend, and what we're doing is setting the whole model for the city this summer with activities, the way that you, Mr. President, who's always been with us, and I've been in this game for 29 years, and you've been there with me all the time.
Don't tell the people I'm that old.
And I'm just asking that they restore that in there so that we can continue to do the work, and we doing the work. And they know, Mr. Price, one other thing, we did get the renewal for Washington Center, so they renewed it. Yeah, great job. And the councilman is going to introduce a motion to restore Buscaino, so he's going to make a motion for that. And I just thank you guys so much. Y'all have to listen to the idiots, but I'm just saying, just.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Doc. We're used to it. President Lima.
Good morning, Council President Wesson, honorable councilmembers. I'm Frank Lima, President of United Firefighters of Los Angeles City. I know that tough choices need to be made by you, our councilmembers, and our mayor. I know also that previous budget shortfalls have been balanced on the back of our firefighters while LAFD was the most decimated department the last several years. UFLAC is pleased that we are taking steps in the right direction, and we're on the road to restoration, but there is much work left to do. Just this week, Governor Brown warned that he's gearing up for what is probably going to be the worst wildland fire season ever. The governor has appropriated $600 million to battle blazes across this great state, but warned that that might not be enough in the future. We're dealing with water shortages, drought conditions, and a situation where our so-called "fire season" beginning to last all year long. LA must be ready with firefighters and resources. I want to thank the Budget Finance Chairman Kokorian and all the Budget Committee for their recognizing the need to continue the ambulance augmentation plan for the next six months while the department determines future deployment strategies, and I especially want to express appreciation to the Budget Committee for adding additional funding for a total of three classes. LAFD is faced with a grave situation, and we don't have time to waste. As you know, the last academy of new rookies hit the field and was deployed in our neighborhoods in fire stations in 2009, and since 2009, we've lost 560 firefighters. The LAFD is the most understaffed big-city department in the country on a per capita basis. The current class at Drill Tower 81, with 55 expected to graduate, doesn't even start to keep up with the expected attrition rate of 93 leaving while 55 graduate. Staffing shortages remain our main concern at this time, and we need to do everything possible to expedite the RAND study, prepare the drill tower facilities for diversity, and ramp up the hiring process. Councilmembers, on behalf of United Firefighters, I want to thank each and every one of you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. President. Okay, do we have a Deborah Garad, Geroade, Garad, Jay Handel, and a Ruth Ellen Billion? Please come forward. And then I also have a card with no name on it. It says phasing out the business tax, and it's the Southland Regional Association of Realtors. So, Mel? Mel, come on up. You didn't put your name on it. All right, ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you, City Council, for taking final comments regarding the budget. I am here representing disabled swimmers who use Glassell Park Pool. We are asking that you retain the policy of free admission for children, sponsors, and disabled patrons. The pool is an invaluable resource for these vulnerable populations, who all swim for health. The proposed $1 entry fee totals $150 annually for a swimmer who uses the pool three times a week and 50 weeks a year. It is a significant financial burden for those of us on limited or fixed incomes. Department of Recreation and Parks may collect approximately $180,000 annually if you use 60 pools, 20 disabled swimmers, and three swims per week. That is the rough equivalent of one commissioner's salary. Please show sensitivity to your disabled constituency. Please keep the pool open year-round with free admission for children, seniors, and the disabled. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you're right there, Jay, so come on.
Yes, good morning. Jay Handel, co-chair of the Budget Advocates. First, let me thank everybody who worked on the budget. God knows, it's an undaunting task, you know, loaves and fishes. I'm here today in a more parochial issue, and that's the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. You guys authorized, in the new budget, a position for grievances, but you didn't fund it. You gave them a credit card, but put no money on it. Many of you know me, coming around the city, working with our mentoring program, I personally spending over $1,000 a month in gas, to come work with neighborhood councils and report back to your deputies when there's problems in your neighborhood council. We get the phone calls from your deputies, because you guys get inundated with phone calls about problems in the neighborhood councils in your area. The grievance policy is a policy you passed in the ordinance, but again, you didn't fund the position. So these phone calls will go on forever. The problems will continue to be unresolved. One neighborhood council downtown, one gentleman has over 43 grievances right now. One gentleman in Venice has more than that right now. Plus, we're now being hit with lawsuits in small claims court that the city attorney has to defend because the department doesn't have the person power to go out and fix these issues. So what I'm asking you today is, it's the money for that one position, any one of you could probably take from your discretionary funds. If you all kicked in $10,000, you could fund the position, but the reality is, it's a nominal, nominal, nominal amount of money to take away all of the negative staff time that you guys have to put in and have your staff put in to resolve issues throughout the neighborhood council. So I'm asking you, the hundred and change that needs to be put in, please kick it into this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So do we have Ruth Ellen? Ruth Ellen? Friends of Glassell Park? Oh, you already spoke. And Mel? And did Deborah Garad come forward? I don't. And so anyway, we'll have Henry Marine and Ronnie Solman. Yes, ma'am.
Council President Wesson, Mel Wilson here, representing the Southland Regional Association of Realtors. I'm a member of the Business Tax Advisory Council, appointed by yours truly. And sir, I just wanted to say that I acknowledge the fact that this city has a crisis, and it's more than one. It's a jobs crisis, it's also a budget crisis. 22% of LA residents right now, today, live at or below the poverty line, and I will share with you by council district, what your council district looks like with respect to poverty. We have a structural deficit. We have labor contracts. We have sidewalks, streets, that all need to be repaired. We have trees that need to be trimmed, and we are losing jobs by the bucketfuls. So what is your plan? What is your plan to create the environment for jobs? What is your plan to grow the revenue for this city? If you had a neighbor and their house was burning, would you tell them, wait next year? We'll send the fire deployment out next year? Or would you say, I need to help you? I need to help you take care of your burning house right now? Focus on jobs. For every 1% decrease in unemployment, the city generates $30 to $40 million in new revenue. We are getting beat over the head by the likes of Rick Perry, LegalZoom. They created 600 jobs in Austin, Texas. Toyota, they're going to Texas. What are we doing? $8 billion is our budget, most of it is already taken account of. We're asking for one-half of 1%. One-half of 1% of an $8 billion budget. You must be able to find something. Councilmembers, I urge you.
Thank you.
Don't delay. Please do something about jobs for LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could get after Mr. Marine, do we have Ronnie Solman? Okay. And Ruth Ellen Billion, I think is how you pronounce it.
She already spoke.
So Ruth, okay, I got, let me get rid of your car.
Get rid of her car.
So.
All right, I'm Ronnie.
Okay.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm Ronnie Solman, a CD14 constituent. We're here promoting our beloved city year-round pool, the Glassell Pool, that is in CD1, but has swimmers from CDs 1, 14, 15, 4, and possibly more. We discovered last week that we missed earlier opportunities to support year-round funding for our pool, and that today was our last chance, so here we are. As you know, our city is only going to get hotter and hotter. This winter has broken records in terms of heat and drought. We had over 400 people one afternoon last week swimming in our pool when it was very, very hot. Although last year at this time, money was found to keep the pool open only until Labor Day, this coming Labor Day, 2014, we are optimistic that the pool will remain open after Labor Day, but there's been no confirmation or absolute fact about that yet. So we're hoping that money will be found again, and that all the city's year-round pools, including Glassell, will remain open through our increasingly warm falls, winters, springs, as well as the summer. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming down. Mr. Marine.
MEU 35 and 62 shows that Budget Committee has got a history of not accounting for the money required to maintain the plumbers and craftsmen in the city of LA. Instead, they've been borrowing money from the employees under the guise of being a tax shelter or some type of benefit plan, which they're not accounting for for the last 22 years. Mr. Kokorian? Mr. Kokorian, how you doing? All right, pay attention a little bit, because you.
No, would you just say what you have to say?
All right. Well, I need somebody to be able to pay attention so they can figure out how to pay us. The valley has no permanent plumbers, except one, and he's an Asian, and he should be a supervisor by now, but he's only got so-called hiring hall employees working on him, so apparently they don't need a supervisor for hiring hall employees. You've gotten rid of all minorities that's been cleaning your buildings out in the valley, and supposedly subcontracted out at the living wage and rather than the prevailing wage, because this is government-funded jobs. Government employees are entitled to a salary equal to union plumbers and union laborers. They're not just janitors picking up paper. They do everything. They clean up the debris. They pick up the disaster stuff. That's what you got the disaster team for. They're here to serve as laborers in a disaster. That's why they have to be provided the prevailing wage and not living wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, last call for Deborah Garad. I missed her. And did Holly Benson speak? Okay, with that said, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Kokorian, that concludes the public comment on the budget. So at this time, I'd like to close that hearing, and we will move on to our next item. And if I could get Mr. Englander? What's the next item, Madam Clerk? And we're going to continue to budget, of course, till tomorrow. And we're going to continue the budget, of course, till tomorrow. And I do want to reiterate that we have closed public comment. We had it today. There will be no public comment tomorrow where it relates to the budget. So can we move to Item 2? Or where, Madam Clerk?
Item 2, special for cards.
John Walsh? Followed by, oh, pass. Ellen Endo? Ellen Endo? Yes, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ellen Endo, and I'm the president of the Little Tokyo Business Association and the co-chair of the Little Tokyo BID. I'm asking you to vote in favor of renewal of our merchant-based bid for the 11th consecutive year. It's hard to believe it's been 11 years, but sometimes that's how long it takes to revitalize a community and keep it going. With a small budget and no paid staff, we have worked hard to build Little Tokyo into one of downtown LA's most desirable destinations. As volunteers, we bring a special brand of dedication and are determined to keep the momentum going. Today, Little Tokyo's reputation for good food, great shops, beautiful temples, a vibrant nightlife, and burgeoning residential population is well-known. It is more diverse and more appealing than ever, and the Little Tokyo bid is there to help ensure it is safe and clean, and to share the good news that it's a pretty cool But as vibrant as Little Tokyo is today, we are even more excited about what it can be in the future and what role it plays in the continuing revitalization of downtown LA. So hopefully, this is the easiest decision you have today. Please renew the Little Tokyo bid. I thank you for your attention.
Great, no, thank you very much. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 1, special for cards.
Item 1, Scott Earl, followed by Sam Cordova,
Mr. President, I was called number 2, and the person called number 1 hasn't shown...
Okay, go ahead. Then Scott, we'll go ahead and file that card. Sam?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the city council. I appear before you to tell you of a gross, gross injustice being perpetuated by this criminal agency, this corrupt agency, the Department of Building and Safety. And you know they're corrupt because they were taking payments, many of them, some years ago. You should have read it or heard about it. Well, since 2008, I have been harassed, even by Frank Bush, the Assistant Superintendent, accusing me of crimes, yet denying me due process. They accused me of having converted a garage to a dwelling place. For since 2008, I have proved time and again that that was not the case, and they continue even with this application to file a lien. Besides, you people are holding a hearing that does not apply to me. And here it is. Appeal or objections relative to proposed fees for nuisance abatement. There's no nuisance, and in 2012, it was proven in court that I did not have a nuisance. The judge wouldn't even allow the jury to consider it, but Frank Bush and his cronies, who intensely dislike me, for what reason, I don't know.
Great, thank you, sir.
Well, wait a minute.
You're out of time, but thank you. If you have any written comments, you can go ahead and submit those as well. Thank you, sir. Okay. Carrie Morris? Follow... Excuse me, you're disrupting the meeting, sir. Thank you. You're disrupting the meeting. Carrie Morris, followed by... Okay, you're disrupting the meeting. That was your last warning. Leilani Tatum? Carrie's not here?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Leilani Tatum.
Can you grab the microphone a little closer to you, please?
You hear me now? My name is Leilani Tatum. I received a notice about some problems that have been taken care of already, and after the problems were taken care of, we still received a bill for $2,594.18 or something like that. I talked to, when I got here, Charles Kalibala, and asked him if a certified letter had been sent to the House and signed by someone. He said yes. I told him I'd like to see that because no one signed it. There was no prior notice or anything like that, but they just turned around and phoned me. And I do not live at this property. My brother, Dale Tatum, does, but I don't live at the property. I live in Riverside County. And as soon as I heard about the problems, I had them taken care of. And I just wanted to know what the appeals process was because I don't think this is
What's the actual property address, ma'am?
717 East 119th Street, Los Angeles, California 90059.
Okay, it's the 15th District, Mr. Buscagno's District? Okay. If you would like his staff, I believe, we'll go ahead and talk to you on the side...
Okay.
...on the ropes and try to figure that out? Or he will personally?
Thank you.
Even better. Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and hold yours on the desk for now and see what comes out of that. And Leilani Tatum? That was you? And Carrie was not here. Was that correct? Okay, apologize. We'll go ahead and file those. On Items 1, we have cards from Herman as well. Herman, if you want to come on up on Items 1, 11, 12, 13, 15, and 18, those are the ones you filled out. You can go ahead and speak on all those now.
For the record, sir, my name is Batman. I represent Los Angeles. As you impede me and you're disrupting me...
Let me just ask you a question. I'll hold your time. I'll hold your time. I just got a quick question for you. Are you speaking officially on behalf of Batman?
I am Batman.
Well, we don't yield the time to other people, sir, so if you wanted to speak as Herman, you could do that.
I am advocating for Mr. Herman...
Go ahead and start your clock.
...as Batman. Now you've heard the testimony of these folks, Sam at North Glaston Avenue, the young woman here, the African-American, discriminatory, prejudiced, racist attacks on peoples, harming them in their homes. Homeland Security, does it exist when a council of 15 disrupt your lives for a measly $6,000 lien without notification through certified mail, Mr. Weezer? What a shame. Shame on you, shame on you, shame on you, says Batman. Thank you, ladies. Such a beautiful crowd of young women, understanding the matter of justice here in Los Angeles, all you Angelenos.
Can you please stay on the topics, please, and just refer to the items that you filled cards out, please?
So is it essential and reasonable, you, Mr. Pretamp, to understand that the U.S. Department of Transportation received your complaint under the Public Works Department for sidewalks? Mr. Weezer ran off again. Mr. Weezer, the issue on sidewalks and streets, is it wayfinding? Is it unreasonable to address the issue on pathways and public sidewalks? And what about you, Mr. Bloomfield? A $10 million request of the public for taxes? And yet, the conversation continues with the poor African-American on the side here, trying to minimize the damage, the harm, by your predatory extortion of lanes. So, Englander, Batman is here, speaking, advocating for Mr. ...
Again, if you could stay on the subjects. If you're going to go off subject again, that'll be your final warning. It'll be on the final warning.
There is no such thing as a warning in Los Angeles, for we are under the Brown Act, William Ralph Brown Act, 54950 to 5496...
It's off-topic. That was your last warning, so thank you. Your time is up, so we'll go ahead and go on to... Time is up. Sergeant, if you could please help him. Thank you. You've been warned several times, and you are off-topic. You know the rules. You're here every day on every subject. Mr. Walsh, who actually does stay on subject? You filled out cards, sir, on Items 1, Items 12, and 15.
Correct. Item 12, this is Raymond Chan. We've been up here about illegality of his findings on the huge skyscraper that they want to build at, next to Capitol Records. That's going on in court. He is really working for the developer of the gigantic skyscraper, twin skyscrapers there. But what this is, is very important. I want people to understand, we have, if you get paid in the city of Los An... This isn't like New York with hundreds of jobs handed out by the mayor in Chicago. You have a certain amount of money that you must be paid and not a dime more. What they're doing here is shitcanning that law and deciding in the back room how much Raymond Chan will be paid as a reward for his selfish, selfless devotion to the developers in Hollywood. Look what it says. Resolve shall be established as recommended by the mayor. Not as recommended by the goddamn city charter, but by the goddamn mayor. Thank you, Judge Pragerson, for allowing me to say that. The next one, this concerns number 15, HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential. Stay tuned for later. Now, this is another reward offer. Now, I got up and asked you, how many reward offers have you given in the past seven years and put out, and how many have been collected? And you did finally answer, one in seven years out of 118. And that was a special circumstances. I just want everyone to understand, if you murder someone in this city and you are a member of a gang, they're not going to stand up for you. The LAPD is afraid of them. They absolutely do nothing.
Thank you very much. Donna Perlman on Items 14 and 19?
I just want to say, it seems to be a lot of money here, 1.2 million for software licenses. So it seems to me, if we can do that, then we can simply have video conferencing spent. If they can spend all this amount of money on software, certainly they can come up with the software to do the ban eyes video conferencing. So this is really wrong to do this, and I'd like to speak on the other item now. Can we stop the clock?
Keep talking.
Okay, number 19, okay, the Bureau of Sanitation. I'd like to tell you that that's money well-spent on the Bureau of Sanitation because they already have gone years and years without a cost of living, like 10 years without a cost of living. So they deserve every part of their salary. They're already living on skeleton crew. I know somebody that works on there, Maryam's husband, he works at Bureau of Sanitation, and they're already working on skeleton crew. And so to have any... So I think that the funding for the Board of Sanitation is money well-spent, and they deserve their salaries, and that's it. So let's keep the funding for sanitation the way it is, because if we can spend money elsewhere, like LAPD, and the money for the DWP, they already get their salaries. That sanitation also should get theirs. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on any of those items before us.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for Item 1...
Yes.
There is a request to receive and file Item 1E in as much as a lien has been paid, and to continue Items G and H to June 3rd.
Okay, those will be continued for two weeks without objection. Before we vote on the open items, I want to turn it over to Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to introduce the leadership of tomorrow, great students from Crenshaw High School Leadership, as well as Washington Prep. Please stand and be recognized by the city council. And let me take a minute and ask Desiree Jenkins. Please, Desiree, if you could just come up to the mic, because these young women are our future, and we're so excited. They're going to meet with, they met with Commissioner Davis over at Public Works, and they're going to meet with a great city attorney, Ms. Kapri Maddox, in a moment. Desiree, please.
Hi, my name is Desiree Jenkins. I'm a senior at Washington Preparatory High School, and our program is called Legacy Ladies, AKA From the Schoolhouse to the White House. And our leadership program basically focuses on minority African-American students and helps them with leadership qualities and also basically ways to get out of what we see around us and to open our eyes to different kinds of businesses and other things. Basically, the sky is the limit in giving us motivation and drive to be whatever we want to be.
Good job. Motivation and drive. Let's hear it. Washington Prep and Crenshaw High, good job.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Labange. With that, we've got, all the items are before us, except for 18. If Mr. Kocorian is okay that we add that item to the list?
Yes, Mr. President. That was actually waived out of Budget and Finance, but it was heard by the Claims Board, and I would recommend approval by the council in open session unless members have any questions or concerns.
Okay, and we've all received the confidential information package on that case as well. So is there any members that have any concerns, questions on that item? No. Madam Clerk, if you can read number 18 then into the record?
The recommendation is to authorize the city attorney to pay $395,000 in settlement in the case entitled Yame Crystal versus the City of Los Angeles. Also, Mr. President, for Item 19, amended motion 19A has been circulated.
Yes, so 19A will be before us as well. With that, we'll go ahead on all those items and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That actually clears the entire agenda then. What do we have left?
And Mr. President, for Item 12, the annual salary for the general manager of the Department of Building and Safety is $234,216.
Great, thank you very much. And before we go ahead and, we'll go ahead and post and refer those matters as well. Yes, Mr. O'Farrell?
Item 11, forthwith, for our colleague, Mr. Parks.
Okay, Item 11, forthwith, without objection will be the order. And with that, we have general public comment. Can we start the general public comment clock, please, as well?
Good afternoon. In 1991, the LA City Council approved a housing development in Westchester known as tract 43416, with the condition that one of the lots be set aside as an open space view lot with public access. as an open space view lot with public access. That lot, identified by LA County Assessor's ID number 4211-018-035, is commonly known as Lot 87. Governing the use of Lot 87 are covenants that run with the land and prohibit grading, developing, or fencing the property. However, a homeowner adjacent to Lot 87 has graded, developed, and completely fenced off all of Lot 87 and added it to his backyard. He's tried twice to build a swimming pool on it. Residents currently have no access to the open space view lot they formerly enjoyed, which has been illegally confiscated and privatized. I ask the City Council to please enforce the land use covenants on Lot 87, and restore to Westchester residents their open space view lot. Thank you.
Great, no "thank you."
Excuse me. Sifu Kelvin Berman Harrison, disciple of Grandmaster Tak Moon Hong, Grandmaster Kim Tay Chong, and Grandmaster Howard and Yvonne Lewis. Addressing the President of the United States, my Kung-Fu teachers, and Honorable Reverend Jesse L. Jackson Senior, my primary proposal investor in my inventions and my music releases. Democrats and bipartisan, Mr. President, I have certain ideas that would be of benefit to the world, and highly possible reorganizing the deflating earth and re-energizing the magnetic polar fields by a process of using abandoned oil wells and abandoned mine shafts. Also, Mr. President, due to the national fallout of radiation and pollution in the air, there can be an alternative to help dilute the radiation naturally without chemicals in the air, and to aid in the health benefits of all citizens around the world. Also, it must be investigated to see in the past of all clergies on record that had contacted over the years from approximately 1999 to 2000, that was getting civil rights information from me, but was not supportive, but also sought to try to deflate me in certain areas. Also, sir. Also, sir, there's another idea to make lands more fertile and less pesticide due to usage of natural sources that we take for granted every day. There's a process to refertilize the land. Now, Mr. President, for years on a daily basis, I was sending civil rights reports and documentations of harassment and assassination attempts and various tactics of Nazism and Aryanism upon me in San Luis Obispo, California. Police harassment, death threats to Reverend Al Sharpton's office, I was given to him. Before I was set up into incarceration, did Reverend Al Sharpton's office, did he sell information to the FBI individuals that he had contacts with? I have never been an informant for any law enforcement organization, only for civil rights organizations I have been helpful for, and for all citizens. This needs to be solved, because there is billions of dollars of detriment and harassment, and certain accidents that has happened to my life, Mr. President, and these situations need to be solved. Thank you very much.
Jose Martinez? Followed by Antonia Ramirez?
Thank you. Mr. John Walsh is right. African-Americans or blacks living in East Los Angeles or in any Latino neighborhoods are harassed and forced to move out with the help of the corrupted Latino, dirty rogue, and racist East LA Sheriff's Department, and the LAPD chanko gang bangers in uniform. However, this racial profiling by diabolical and wicked Latino gang bangers and wetbacks are not just aimed and directed at black people, but against law-abiding Mexican-Americans like me, and military veterans, and pilots, and law-abiding Asians, and Caucasian people too. These evil and demonic psychopaths, gang stalkers, harass, violate, and use, and committing home invasion robberies, mail theft, ID theft, invasion of privacy through video and audio spyware, among several other heinous crimes. But the only difference is District Attorney Lacy and Department of Justice Eric Holder and Obama Administration will immediately dispatch the full letter of the law to punish all Latino and wetback chanko gangbanger offenders. Yet Asians, Caucasians, military vets and pilots, and myself, we do not get any equal protection under the law, nor do we get due process rights, nor do we get any orders against these terrorists and gang stalkers to cease and desist their criminal activities against us. So, the issue is, does the double standard exist in our democratic criminal and civil jurisprudence? Absolutely yes. Therefore, we come to the City Hall to rightfully address our city grievances, so that we may help other citizens. We bring full exposure and transparency, so that the rule of law may finally be enforced and reciprocated. And another note, um, another note, excuse me. Deport, deport, deport. Oh, well, thank you.
Great, thank you. Followed by Susan Rocha, Roca?
Well, I remember Susan's voice...
And by Donna Perlman.
...said that KISS stands for Keep It Simple Stupid. And apparently, I'm the stupidest person in here, because I still know how to count my own pigs and hogs. Principal initially given shelter for hours of government service is shown in heckling cold MOUs. And we know how much of the Davis bacon y'all been taking and not accounting for yet. So, what's your problem with the Budget Committee? California government code shows you cannot keep a person in a temporary position past six months. And should you keep a person in a temporary position past six months, for more than 90 days, you're going to be 100% responsible for the back payments made for them persons contributions to the city. So, that means y'all in the hole already. And you got to come up with the back pay you didn't provide in the first place. Now, did you put that in your budget, Mr. Kocorian? Mr. Keretz, and Mr. Bon... Mr. Bonin? Now, you're a lawyer, and you're a lawyer, and you're supposed to be... Ignorance is no excuse for understanding when you shelter money for the people in the city of LA. You got to account for it. Now, why can't he figure that out? He got to account for that money. He's on Budget Committee, and the chief, ex-chief police. How come he can't figure that out? This ain't brain surgery. Just simple deductive reasoning, and adding and subtracting. And y'all been... It's better to give than to receive in the first place. And y'all's got to pay in the last place. Come on, is it the budget? You can't have all these temporary employees, or so-called temporary employees, employed past six months. But you got them, and they're all over the valley. Did y'all succeed from this city?
Thank you. And can I ask Mr. Bloomfield, Bob? If you could... Councilman Bloomfield, was that the robes? If you could come up to the chair for a minute? Just got a question on a motion that was introduced. Mrs. Susan? Yes. Roca, please.
My name is Susan... Is this on? My name is Susan Rocha, and I am a noise victim of Divine Savior Catholic Church, 610 Cypress Avenue, 90065. I'm looking to get you to change the noise law, Municipal Code, Chapter 11, Article 5, Section 115.02B, that gives churches an exemption, certain exemptions, which really, they're not exempt, but from the noise law. So, take that word out of the law, so I don't have to hear four bullhorns coming into my house eight times a day, every day, and whenever they feel like it. Off-key tape recordings of bells, off-key tape recordings of church music, or whatever else they want to play. Is it disturbing the peace issue that LAPD refuses to enforce? And they actually put in the Ask LAPD computer, do not respond to the address at 610 Cypress Avenue for noise complaints. And that puts them above the law. That's not fair. You need to change the law. That discriminates. I want peace and quiet. Everybody else is entitled to call LAPD, but I'm not. That's unequal protection. That's not fair. That's giving them more power, and it's unjust that I don't have the same rights that everybody else has. It's not fair. I just want peace and quiet in my house. And it's off-key bells all day long, tape recordings, and church music. Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. It's awful, starting at 7:55 in the morning to 6:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, depending on how long they want to go. It's a nightmare. You have no enforcement for churches, for church nuisances. Something should be done about church nuisances.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Donna? And if I can get the other two to get ready as well. Followed by Herman.
Anyway, I want to tell people to keep track of your credit card purchases, because there's people... There's fraud out there. There's people using your number for their purchases. These things are... So, keep track of it. That way, the credit card will give you credit for it, for things you didn't use. Anyway, I wanted to say that our City Council closed down our video conferencing, not because of money, because they don't want us to... They don't want the voice of the people. They don't want us to talk about, we need to get rid of the gun control laws. We need to protect ourselves from terrorists. There's formal terrorists from Yemen who are against us, who wants us dead in America. Our countries... Our country needs bombs and citizens who can defend themselves, and the firepower to do so. The President doesn't want the average person protect themselves, just themselves and their bodyguards. We need to be able to protect ourselves against whoever is endangering us, whether it be here or abroad. Our gangs are everywhere, and our police can't be everywhere to protect us. And again, we repeat, we need to have our video conferencing. We need to live, be able to disable the sick and the elderly, and the people who can't travel, to be able to come and speak on video conferencing, and to have advertisement, a small amount of money, so those people who don't know about it can speak. We need to be able to have the... To get rid of the Eva Construction by Garcetti's, his Twin Towers, his Westfield project, the $59 million, the LAPD, the 27-story building, another large expenditure, and Wall Street, taken away. That's $69 million from their city each year. We need to take that money back, not take it from the city employees. We need to make sacrifices. Our mayor needs sacrifices. The City Council, Controller, City Attorney, take it from them.
Great, thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, at J. Walsh Confidential, or emailing... You can Twittering at Hollywood Dems. First of all, yes, Ms. Martinez is right. The gangs control Ramona Gardens. I want every black person to know that if you set your black feet one inch in East Hollywood, you will be firebombed, and there isn't a black politician in this city that will defend you. And remember, the spirit of Malcolm X is what possesses this white boy. You remember, in the previous life, I was black. In a life, I was black. This white life is a demotion. I wasn't as good enough black person in my last life. That's why I got this evil white skin on me. Okay, Mike Bonin Dress Day, remember, wear your prettiest rocks tomorrow. Leland Yi, vote for Leland Yi. We want to put an honest gunrunner in Sacramento. Well, he's on the ballot. You don't have to write him in. Endorsements, come to our website, endorsements. Now, here's the most important thing. Judge Pragerson did not say we could show you pornographic images, but you can't see what I have here, so it's okay. If you want to see this pornographic image, you have to come to my website. This is LA Express. It's a beat-off newspaper. Open up to page four, and you'll see that Wong... It says Wong is right. Yes, John Wong for Los Angeles County Assessor is advertising in this evil newspaper that dehumanizes all women. Of course, incidentally, no black women in this. This is also a race... Don't... This is only for white pussy. That's what's here. And Mr. Wong is advertising, one page, page four, issue 1346. Go see it right now. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. And Herman to close.
Very discouraging, Americans. Fellow Americans of the US, here in the state of California. Mr. Johnson over there said to me, in his racist comment, that I was disrupting this meeting as Batman. Mr. Johnson, the African-American, who I reside in Mr. Weezer's district at a time, with the racial, African-American, Hispanic issues going on. What nonsense in the 20th century that we have racial issues, Mr. Price, regarding African-Americans on one side, and others on the other side? But Batman wants you guys to change this. Get involved in your communities, and stop this agitation of public. So, Mr. Weezer said about disabled people, mainly those of you who are, what? Pedestrians, that it belongs to build a bridge for the DaVinci's Development. And all of you voted on it yesterday. It belonged. Is it essential to build a bridge away from homeless encampment that you have not done a damn thing for, says Batman? You, Mr. Englander, with your fortification and your dating of women here at City Hall and your sexual harassment, how do you address it, sir? Mr. Englander, in the sexual harassment case regarding you and your staff, what is the issue, sir? Exactly, no comment. No comment. But when you take the right of the public away from public comment under the Brown Act, 54950, 54960, you are in violation of the California Constitution. You are in right of the people with disability rights. You are involved with treason to the public. So, let it be known, Batman is back.
Sit down, please. Don't disturb this meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. Do we have any announcements, members?
Excuse me, Mr. President. There's requests to send Item 19 forthwith.
Okay, that'll be forthwith without objection. Any announcements? Tom?
As you know, Mr. President, the Los Angeles City Fire Department, and in conjunction with State Agency, had a major drill this morning at the fire station 88 in Sepulvede, in the heart of the San Fernando Valley, for preparedness. Very successful this morning, got a lot of public outreach, and now, they have a live demonstration in cooperation with Universal Studios at their studios to make people aware about preparedness, which is so key. And we live here in Southern California. So, I want to thank all involved, especially the State Department of Emergency Services, and our very own Los Angeles City Fire Department, as well as the County Fire Department.
Yes, thank you very much. And tomorrow... One more?
Another announcement. Mr. Labange, I thought it'd be worthwhile for you to mention that we celebrated the 75th anniversary of a great iconic structure here in downtown LA. Union Station, thank you.
And if you haven't been to Union Station lately, walk through, go to Trax Restaurant. It's really a wonderful place, but it's all under the great leadership of Mr. Jose Weezer. Good job.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I just wanted to remind you again that if any member wishes to present a motion relating to the budget, if you can present that motion today to the CLA's office, what it will allow us to do is present a packet of motions for consideration tomorrow in an organized way. So, I would just urge all members who anticipate doing budget motions, please turn them into the CLA's office today, so that they can assemble that package, and we can have an orderly process tomorrow. It will very much expedite our consideration of the budget, and it will allow more time for members to be able to consider each of those issues. So, you can take it down to the second floor So, you can take it down to the second floor of the CLA's office anytime today, and they'll work with you on that.
Thank you. And with that...
I'll second what he said, but I'll also say if you come up with a creative thought, you can put it in tomorrow. There's no council rule against that, but they want to try to get it all in today, because sometimes in the heat of debate, you'll think of something that will be good for the city. Thank you. I have to throw that in?
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Yes, we'd like to encourage everybody to get them in today, but thank you, Mr. Labonge, for that. We'll be starting tomorrow at 9 o'clock sharp, colleagues. So, we're starting right at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. Reminder that it is a casual day tomorrow, so feel free to come comfortable, and we'll jump right into deliberations at 9 o'clock. There is no public comment scheduled on the agenda for tomorrow, so those who wish to come every day and speak on every single item, feel free to stay home, save the traffic. And with that, you can listen in at home, though, if you'd like. For the other folks that do want to participate, Council Chambers is open. With that, Mr. Fuentes? Okay, adjourning motions, members, everybody please rise for adjourning motions. Everybody in Council Chambers, please rise. We'll start off with Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wadalupe Chavez Abundis was born on February 5, 1929, in Los Angeles. In 1950, she met and married William Abundis, and in 1954, they bought a home in the northeast San Fernando community of Pacoima. Wadalupe was best known by friends and family as Lupita, and was a stay-at-home mother. Lupita became a widow in 1994, when her husband William lost his battle to cancer. Lupita was an amazing person with a big heart, who always was a willing friend and would help neighbors in need. She opened the doors of her home to family members and friends, including all of the community in Pacoima there. She became known as Grandma to many, and her home was known as The Hangout, a place for most of the teens on the block. She hosted barbecues, holiday events, and many events at her house. She will be dearly missed, and her funeral services will be held at 9:00 AM Friday, May 23, at Mission Hills Catholic Mortuary.
Sounds like a special lady. Thank you. Any others, members? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.